Did you try to open it?
Yeah, there you go.
Nope, not at all.
Today is Thursday.
How do we pull that up?
October sixth.
Mike's.
Oh, were we gonna do that? It is seven P M.
We're gonna do that.
Oh, I don't know.
I'm doing that.
I don't know. We're starting the work session. We're trying to connect to.
Remember?
Display something on the screen. Yeah. Mark has got it. He's on it.
No, I did not got it. Mark, no, please.
Mark looks like he's got, just act like you.
Okay, let's do, let's let Mark play with that and then let's skip that for a few.
Okay, because remember we talked.
Yes. I should have, if we were doing it today, I don't remember.
Yeah, we have to do it today because then we need to bring it to council next week.
What are we doing? There's a thingamabobby.
Yes, do you have an H D M I output?
I don't know.
Not on that thing of the computer, I don't. Turn on, show me the other side. Nope, you do not have an H D M I output.
Can you forward it to one of them?
Can you email me whatever that is and I'll.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I always need an assistant.
Does anybody have an actual agenda from, I mean, I'm sure we all do, but does anybody have access to it for the next, for Thursday's meeting?
Yeah.
We can kind of go through that real quick, just if anybody, I don't think there's any legislation, except for the conversation we're gonna have here in a few minutes to talk about whether or not we're going to add any legislation because I, I actually have a couple minor things to talk about. I know Stacy has some stuff from Mike Flickinger that we need to discuss before next week. Jason, I believe, has maybe some stuff he wants to talk about tonight, just so Monday night's not so bad. Just a reminder for everybody, we have a meeting Monday night, which is community. We have a meeting Tuesday night, which is finance. We have a meeting Wednesday night, which is planning and zoning. And then we also have a meeting Thursday night, which is the council meeting for all of those that want to attend.
Were we early enough to get finance here or?
No. It is, so finance is going to be held. We have a table, a round table. It is still a public meeting. If anybody does show up for it, they're more than welcome to. It will be a little bit more of a tight fit, but anybody, we actually are, I'm gonna say this, I'm encouraging everybody that is able to come Tuesday night because we're talking about finance. Anybody that can't come will obviously have the reporters. But yes, we are having it there. It is too quick to turn it around. It was what I was told today. Brian, seven? I believe it's at seven. I believe the only one at six thirty is Jason's, is at six thirty for the community. And that's probably because that one's gonna take a while. I'm expecting.
Six thirty to eight.
Yeah.
That's what I had written down.
I'm expecting that one to take a while.
So it looks like that's not on the board.
I think she was just confirming it today. I don't even know that I signed it, so I will verify that that gets out tomorrow. And that's gonna be finance.
Oh, finance, no idea.
And seven P M. And that is Tuesday. Actually, I did just sign it today. That's the one I signed today. Tuesday, and I'm pretty sure it was at seven P M. What's that?
Is my meeting here?
Yes. I'm certain everybody's is except for finance.
All right, in the email chain, you never actually specified a time, that's why.
Do you prefer it six thirty or do you prefer seven?
Seven.
Seven is what is, I believe, I signed today. I believe the only one, six forty-five is gonna be the variance hearing on Thursday. So that's the only one. So his is at six thirty, Tuesday is at seven, Wednesday is at seven, Thursday is at six forty-five. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that's why I was.
You're a busy man.
Yeah. That's why I wanted to remind everybody of the meetings this week because we were actually going to send out an email on Friday, this Friday, because we have new members of planning and zoning, just as a courtesy reminder to everybody for planning and zoning. If anybody has any interest in planning and zoning, it is also gonna be here. And we will be discussing the variance as well because it goes through planning and zoning first. So if anybody wants even more additional information about it, again, feel free to stop by.
Are we gonna talk about the variance at all tonight?
No. Well, maybe. Eric's here, so.
I'm gonna give you a brief overview of what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be a low down.
I need some background.
Yeah, I need some background in the variance.
No, it's a genuine, it's a standard one. If it's a genuine hearing, we should probably just get it after here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was, I was thinking maybe this was on the other, the one that we already had and kind of tabled.
No, it's a new one.
Yeah, if it's a new one, I don't wanna talk about it beforehand.
Yes, so it's gonna be there. So yeah, planning and zoning on Wednesday and then at the council meeting on Thursday.
Easy to make your recommendation. You guys have a lot of quality.
So, do you wanna go through, I don't know that there's anything on the agenda as far as legislation goes. There it is.
It's right there or?
Okay.
We're, I think we're trying, feels like we're moving fast. Does anybody's, I know Streets, sounds like they've got something to report on. Does anybody?
And Jason.
Yeah. Okay, well then, who wants to go first?
Mine's not fun, so maybe leave it.
Hers is gonna be the long, hers is probably gonna be the longest.
Long and boring, so after.
We'll just shoot. So, M P C A, new elections came out, new president, Carrie Jarca, and the new secretary is Virginia Shuffield. They're absolutely amazing people. Carrie's been doing so much this last year, so it's nice to see her in a president role because she is definitely deserving. Payment portal is up, so you can now pay for your community association membership right online. I know that they were working hard on that. So upcoming events is the Halloween party, October the twenty-second, and then the Tupperware party with the drag queen Dee Lee, and that is October twenty-ninth. That is happening for M P C A. Do you want me to roll right in communications?
Sure.
All right, so chatting with council happened. I, I think we can always kind of review and kind of make it better each time. I, I think the main, we're not breaking stuff, you're doing your toes, mayor. I, I think we need to remind people and ask for topics. I think the topic that, you know, Council Personberger said in your presentation was great. I did ask for topics. I know that was something that came up, you know, what are the topics, this and that, and it was asked for. I think we need to ask a couple of times to, to say, oh, hey, we did that. We asked three times, this, this and that, and then we'll come up with something. So, so we'll do that for next time. Now, I was thinking, and I've been thinking about what the mayor said. So we would be right on time with about December for our next chatting with council. However, it's December. Everybody's busy, so do we wait until the start of January for the next one?
I would say into January. No, mid-January should work. I was gonna say push it to February, but we actually get worse weather. That's the February and March, so we'll do it January, but maybe here.
Yeah, mid-January sounds.
Yeah, that sounds fun. I agree. I totally agree.
I just wanted to get kind of a consistent, consensus on that. So we'll kind of go for that and then we'll start asking for topics. I asked for topics for the next one and posting for this one. Next communication meeting is ten seventeen. I do wanna talk about survey with Eric Fisher. We're just gonna get that basic thing. That way we can have all those questions and then kind of all review it together and say, hey, you know, we would like to add this on behalf of this committee or this and that, so. That's it.
All right.
Jason.
Yes.
You're up. Nobody's, Jason, it's your turn. Okay, well, so far you win. You didn't ask for money.
Can you go back to the meeting? Okay, you didn't have your scroll. So I wanna, um, this was.
Go back. Yes, we need to.
The landscape thing here.
I have a copy of it for anybody else that wants to.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so, um, the mayor asked, got hopes for doing just some maintenance. This is not what I was talking about with the community committee meeting.
Right.
About standardizing the beds and stuff like that. This is just getting our beds cleaned up for the winter, being reeded and milled. So we had a company come in, give us an estimate. This is the only company that gave us an estimate.
Out of twelve.
Out of twelve.
Twelve companies we called, contacted.
Did we call the county?
There are a few things in here that we probably don't want and, or at least in my opinion, I don't think we wanna touch the, um, um, community building. I mean, we're probably getting new house, getting new animals, we don't wanna touch that. But this is basically all the entrances and it's around the ponds, I believe. And this is just weeding them, it's priming back the bushes, it's putting mulch down and getting them ready for the winter. The quote does have tax in it.
Correct.
Which we wouldn't pay, and it was fifty-six hundred dollars without the tax. We have not spent any money, even though we have some budgeted for landscaping, for mulching and whatnot. But it would be nice to kind of clean some stuff up for the winter.
And we actually did do this last year and the year before. We did do this twice a year. We did it at the beginning of the year, not as many places because we didn't have the lakes and things like that. And we spent, I do not quote me on this, but for some reason, thirty-five hundred-ish sticks out in my mind, but we didn't have all of the new section lakes and all of that. So this isn't something new. This is just something that that company reached out to us in like February, March, said that they weren't gonna be able to continue to do our landscaping, which put us in a bind and we weren't able to find somebody else short notice to do it. So this is not something that, this is not brand new. This is just something that is different.
Yeah. And since we haven't done this year.
We have them.
It's about the price of paper, would have been that twice.
Right.
Yeah, just about.
Probably, yeah.
Do we have, do we have to make an appropriation?
So, I'm gonna answer that in my bluntness. I believe we may still have to. I do not have a right answer. I am told Jeff is gonna be in tomorrow. There is gonna be two things that we may need to do in appropriation for anyways. And I am only pointing that out because we may need to, if, if you guys wanna move forward on a couple of these things, if we do, then obviously we would probably wanna waive readings and do all of that because we're, we would need to get on somebody's schedule if we were gonna try to do it this fall.
Yeah, I would have no problem.
Okay.
Would have no problem.
Okay.
Moving this forward.
Perfect.
I did have something. I love the idea. I think that'll be a big, you know, morale boost, community-wide. Something that I would say is perhaps we could, you know, get clarification on what they plan to do around the ponds and whatnot, as there have been numerous plantings there with, you know, like the, I call it the least bureaucratic group.
I believe.
Um, so just, you know, we just need to follow up and make sure that they're not gonna be tearing stuff out.
I can tell you, these are the ones that cost.
Cause there's a lot of stuff planted.
Because I look at that, I look at those two trees out my office window every day. So I know exactly. But those trees are right across. When they were originally planted, there was a bed that went all the way around those trees and now it's been overgrown by weeds and everything.
And I think, I think part of it moving forward is, is to talk about,
Right.
do we even want to continue to mulch some of those? Because some of those, if you just pull out to, and don't take, for everybody that loves it, don't take this wrong. Some of them honestly just need some of the bushes removed, make them into grass and leave the trees alone.
Oh, absolutely.
Because, you know.
Especially depending on what kind of bush they are.
But maybe, but there are some that I feel like, that are right along the path that should be maintained. So I'm not saying get rid of all of these beds, but I mean, some of those ponds, I think, have four, six, eight flower beds around it that people can't even see.
Right.
So I think the ones closest to the.
What my recommendation is gonna be for next year is that we, um, we have a commu- community events around the ponds and the mulching, and we have mulch delivered to the certain areas and ask people that live in those areas to come out and help us mulch them.
Nice.
So we'll buy the mulch, we'll ask the community to count them first.
Yeah, that'd be my only, that'd be my only comment here. I think it's a great idea.
But, you know, we neglected them really for the last year and a half, so it might be nice to just.
Just get them all done at once.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm totally on board with it and can get legislation for Thursday, if you guys, it would be the appropriation. I don't know if this is an actual, if this is just more of a service agreement or contract. So if I have to get something, I would get that in front of you guys, too. If it's just more of a service agreement, I don't need to, because the amount is, is, I don't think I'm gonna need to do anything other than the appropriation, so, but I'll verify that with this. Get the tax off. I, it did look like there was still one or two places at the community building.
They weren't in here, so yeah, we'd have.
I'm gonna tell them to take those off, so then that would put us under, that should put us a little bit lower down. So if everybody's on board with that, then I would like to go, if I need to do an appropriation, if Jeff tells us we don't need to do anything, then we'll just, is, then that's, I know we can't, we're not voting for anything, but I'm, I don't think we need to. That's, that's more of a, it's just a maintenance thing for us. So I will verify if I need to do anything. If not, you guys will see that on appropriation.
I mean, we've put money in for green space.
Correct.
I don't think we've touched.
Yeah, I would assume this is there. I would assume I do, I may not need to do an appropriation, but don't quote me on that till tomorrow. If so, you'll see it.
And then do we have an update on replacing the dead trees?
Um, we talked to.
What are you doing?
Yeah.
Talking about that.
We're gonna have two conversa, we're actually gonna have two conversations about that.
Okay.
One is next year, how we move forward. This year, the plants, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak in my terms. There are several trees around the basketball court, some of those that you guys are aware of that are dead, that are getting replaced. I am told that that's gonna be, I would assume, I thought he said at the end of October.
Uh, yes.
So, um, he's coming out tomorrow to remove another dead tree. So we'll follow up here in the next couple of days and see when that's gonna be done. But we have been in contact with him and I believe it's October. And then Eric is gonna have a little brief discussion about.
Other trees.
Other trees and street line trees in general.
Right.
Because I think we all keep going back, and I don't wanna say we all. I feel like it's gone back and forth between what are we responsible for and what are we not. So Eric is gonna have a little bit of a conversation, what his view is and what your guys' view is, and let's meet in the middle. We've got to, we need a policy for how we're gonna move forward with street line trees, end of story. I'm, I'm tired of going back and forth. Um, did you have anything else for what you want? Or is everything else going to Monday?
For now?
Yeah.
I was just gonna bring up one.
Go for it, cause I'm gonna bring up something when you're done.
So, uh, good news, the new pool chairs are in town.
Nice.
We are just trying to get them, they have to get a special truck to get it into the neighborhood. So, um, they have, they put it on a big truck and they can't get the big truck into the neighborhood, so they have to put it on a smaller truck that has a lift gate. Uh, but they are in town, ready to be delivered, so that's some pretty cool news.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we will store them away in a pod until.
Do we know?
Where do they look at?
How we have to get them off of the truck and how many people we're gonna need? It is.
We pay for the lift gate service.
So do we need some muscles there to move them from A to B at some point into this, okay?
My guess is that with lift gate service, they have a pallet jack and they're gonna.
Okay. If we need something, I thought about maybe reaching out to a couple of the lifeguards again and seeing if we could get one or two of them that might have availability this weekend. Um, I know there's a couple of them away at college, but they're going to college locally, so maybe we could get a couple of them to stop in. They're already on payroll, so that would be an easy one, assuming Jeff and Leah say that we're okay doing that. So, um, I'll just, we'll figure that out as they get here, when they get here. Um, just 'cause I, I know Brian is not gonna be able to do that, especially by himself. Is that the only thing you have on that?
That would be all I have.
So, we have been, I have been collecting some of, going through my emails and Barb has been going through some of her emails for you for Monday night. So I have found some of the stuff from AquaDoc, just again, just a reprint, just so I have it. Um, we have a folder that we have been putting stuff together for the AquaDoc, so you can talk about that. Um, which is the fountains, aerators and all of that for the, again, trying to get ready for your meeting. We have also found the stuff for the shelter. So there was a couple different estimates from twenty twenty-one that Beth McFarland had gotten. There's some that I had gotten, um, and again, talking about locations and all of that. And then we have also started getting some of the information, just again, reprints from the maintenance shed, the starting of the topics of, again, location and all of that. So I have been pulling emails, she has been pulling emails to get you a folder together so you have at least somewhere to start on these conversations on Monday. So, good luck with that on Monday night.
Prepare for a long meeting.
Yeah, I would, I would, everybody expect that one to probably be longer than any of the other ones. But I think these conversations need to happen before the finance, at least the first set of conversations need to happen. Um, and then I know you're also gonna have some pool things to talk about before. So whatever else you have, those are the three main things I have for you for that. And then again, moving forward with a budget for a maintenance plan for the flower beds and stuff next year. So I know you've got like at least five things going. The other thing that I had for you is we were thinking about removing the two cabinets that are in the, the men's and women's restrooms in the current building, the, the actual sinks, but they're just, they're nice gray cabinets and getting some sort of topper for it. Do you want those for down at the pool? For like a storage in the, um, in the, I mean, cause they're nice. They're like cute little gray, like cabinets or something. If you don't have any interest, we won't, but we thought we could reuse them, they're a couple hundred bucks. We just got them last year.
Well, are you talking about?
In the bathrooms, for the.
Do they have this cabinet or are you talking about the cabinet with the sink?
It has the sink. We wouldn't use the sink, we would just get some other topper for it.
Do you wanna think about using the sink, since in that little snack shop?
Maybe.
It used to have, it has water pipes coming out the wall.
And absolute, I mean, I guess here's the answer, yes.
It's a different shaped sink than you want.
True. I was thinking just a hand.
But we, we just have to figure out how do we get them removed within the next week or two. Obviously, the, the construction people said, do whatever you wanna do. We've already removed, um, the hand sanitizers and all that kinda stuff. Right now, they're being used at the thirty-seven hundred corporate for the kitchen area there, but we plan on anything that's left over, taking it back down to the pool, having that stuff there. Again, it's either gonna go in the trash or, or use it. So we've, we have tried to, again, be fiscally responsible with some of that stuff. The cabinets are really nice, there's nothing wrong with it, but we thought, these are actually nice gray, painted. Um, they would look great in the, they would look great in there. So that was just one of the, um, other topics that I wanted just to make sure that you wanted them down there somewhere. I don't know how we're getting them out, but we need, we'll do that this week.
Okay.
And you can get like pretty cheap Ikea counters.
That's, yeah, even if we don't do, I just thought even if we used it as a counter, it would be somewhere to store chips and pop and all of that, so it's just not sitting on the floor.
Pretty nice, too. And they deliver it for free, like.
Did we get the design up?
Yes, they got it up today. Yep, they got it up today.
They can even choose that, what kind? We want a little nice countertop?
I'm gonna do that. No, I'm gonna let them keep going and then I'll do it on my mayor's one. I'll just keep buttoning it. I, I do very good at buttoning on people's topics.
I mean, that's why you're mayor.
So who else? You're done, yeah, you're done, so.
Okay, so basically I had a meeting with Mike Flickinger and Tiffany, so we kinda talked about other layouts. That first layout that was presented, um, closer to the back of the properties didn't, actually didn't turn out to be the most fiscally responsible and be, um, easiest from an engineering standpoint because of the amount of grading that it would require. So we kinda talked about different scenarios, still keeping it in the back, moving it a bit forward, uh, which would, uh, actually accomplish a couple of things. One, it would lessen the amount of grading that we would need to do, but two, it would also keep that tree line on everybody's property, so it would be that natural fence that everybody, I think, would be.
So it would be inside the tree lines.
Yeah. Yeah, and it would be, they would be a little bit more open to keeping that, I think, based on my conversations with the residents and, you know, um, having that natural barrier between them and Northland Plaza. And two, it's like harder to like jump versus like just putting a fence up. So I think it, it, kinda talking to everybody, we decided that that would be a better option. Um, in regards to what Mr. Busick said, um, looking for the faults in the old pipe, again, our recommendation at this point is that we don't pursue that because of the excess amount of water that we're also trying to, um, consider, um, going forward.
I understand what you're all hearing.
Um, so, the reason is, is we still wanna kind of accommodate for the future. So because of the amount of water that, um, we need for this new pipe to accommodate, looking for those old, um, old faults in the old pipe and repairing that did not seem fiscally responsible or, uh, something that would benefit the village in the long run. Also.
Are you saying because even if we did that, we would still need to do this?
Correct.
If that whole pipe was working, it's still not.
It's not enough for the volume, also considering small contractor work. It's really, basically really hard to find a contractor that would do those small bits and pieces jobs. Um, the amount of disruption that that would entail for the residents to dig one hole and then figure out if there's a problem or not in replacing that and finding the right fit, then digging another hole and then having that piecemeal job, we're concerned about the timeframe for that. And also, it's not, it, it's a riskier move. So basically, kind of our recommendation and the engineer's recommendation is still to pursue this project, which is digging basically a new pipe with a new trench, um, with, you know, those other flow models that would accommodate a better flow for a longer period of time. Um, again, this is kind of a model, and then the next page, kind of models. According to what Mike Flickinger said, this model is basically the grading that would entail. Um, some properties need a little bit more grading. The church would lose part of its parking lot a little bit here. Um, Anita would have a little bit more grading on her property, but she doesn't have that tree line and then it kinda goes from there. So that's kind of a model of what it would look like. Again, it's a basically large French drain with like a trench that only really overfills in, um, serious rains and it wouldn't be standing water. It would just kind of accommodate for that overflow and it would basically accomplish two things. One, it would cut down on cost because the pipe that we would put in the ground would be about half the size. And two, we can really accommodate for a little bit more even than what the models show for overflow water. Say, my perspective is, say, we have more global warming and there's a larger amount of rainfall than we're accommodating for. I think this would.
There will be.
Be easier to handle that.
Do you know about the blended township lawsuit that they have filing, anything filed against them?
Great, so, things like that.
People on a court who had waste deep water in their street and their houses had eight feet of water in the basement.
So.
So, does this, is the, the red line's a pipe and then it went to a trench?
The red pipe is, we're just, that red pipe is just being basically replaced with.
Right.
So with a larger diameter.
The red indicates a pipe.
Correct.
And then it's gonna transition to a trench.
To that French drain, yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's not just a trench, right? Cause it's got.
So it's got a pipe.
Well, I'm sorry, it's got a pipe in the mid, down the middle of an eighteen inch pipe.
Oh, so it does have a pipe.
It has a pipe.
Okay.
So that's for like your standard rain, the pipe will handle it. And then.
Pipe underground.
Yeah. And then it has perforations in it, like a French drain. Do you know what a French drain is? So, but if it can't handle that amount of rain, it bubbles over and then the trench takes the rest of it out.
It's crazy.
Yeah. And the trench, which confused me at first, cause I was like, what? Why is the trench twelve feet wide? Cause the trench is usually about twelve feet wide.
Right.
But at its deepest point, it's only like six inches deep or something.
So the reason for that is so it's a good slope so you can mow it.
It's not like, oh, I have this trench in my backyard, what am I gonna do? You're like, oh, the ground goes down, the ground goes up.
Yeah, so it's mowable and it's not like those residents are losing part of their backyard that they can't use. So that's kind of our recommendation with that. Right, so we spent a good hour.
Hour and a half.
Discussing all of that and making sure that we're making a good decision, making sure that this is fiscally responsible, making sure that this is a long term um solution. So that's kind of our recommendation versus pursuing that old clay pipe and that repair project, which it seems from multiple perspectives, that would be, still be a Band-Aid. Um to kind of the issue that we have. So that's our official recommendation.
Do we have an estimate on the cost? I know we don't have a detailed answer.
It was about half a million dollars, which is half of what the other cost would be, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's not we're doing the full pipe thing.
So the other thing too is, um I guess the other thing for full disclosure, what we talked about is the orientation of where that trench would be. So again, one would be closer to the property line. We kind of decided that wouldn't be um as good for everybody because we would lose that tree line and it would be harder to grade and the bat issue and there's some other kind of details um that we talked about. But again, I'm pretty detail oriented, so I asked a lot of questions about that. Um there would a lot, I'm not saying trust me, but if you have further questions, come talk to me or ask me now because, you know, I was pretty detailed about that. It would just be a larger amount with little benefit to the residents uh when it comes to that. Except just tucking it back into the property. Um we could follow the natural progression of where that Jordan River is. If anybody's ever been out there, it literally just kind of forms like this brook, but like not nice. The biggest problem with that, the person that would be most affected would be Eddie Bell and you can see right there where it's labeled. You can see where those trees are. He was okay with losing his shed on his property, which he will, and you can see that there. Go up a little bit, that shed. So I spoke to him and he's okay with losing that back shed.
Yeah, there's CBS TV shows. He's just losing the back shed.
If we tuck that forward and follow that natural progression of the brook, would it be a little bit more um aesthetically pleasing? Maybe, but the problem with that is digging, all of those things would lose his beautiful oak trees and he was really not into that and because I think his property would be most affected. You know, I think that would not be a great decision.
He's already giving up a lot. It makes sense that he says, look, I'm willing to give up this, but then I got this. Seems like a wonderful compromise.
Yeah, yeah. Those trees are just beautiful.
I don't remember anyone there having a big, when we did this meeting at the committee building, I don't remember everyone saying like, wait, you're gonna take it out some trees or you're gonna do, people were just like, are you going to stop the water? Is this going to be, maybe it's better?
When, yeah, I think once you start looking, again, I live there, so I can easily say this. When when you have the option of cutting down a tree or fixing your yard, which I mean, in the last five years, we now have sinkholes back there. So we never had that stuff before. So I was able to use my yard. My yard is absolutely not usable. We're not doing this because my yard is not usable. There's fifty houses along there that are all now getting sinkholes because the amount of water that's just sitting on our property for days on end. You can't use your property because of the mosquitoes. You can't. So it it's extremely, it's extremely annoying and, you know, I think for people that were like, I'm not gonna lose a tree after five years, you're like, take the tree. I I I need my yard back. And I think the other part that concerned me about, and I didn't say this in Mike's meeting, when you follow the natural line, it actually brings that up quite a bit further and I feel like that is also taking away from people's land. If we keep it towards the back um as far back as we possibly can, we aren't, and I understand the trench is not deep, but you know, having that halfway through your yard, you're still gonna be running over it with a lawnmower and, you know, doing all of that and it's not gonna be as pleasing. So. It, towards the end of the, you know, towards the end of the conversation, the number one thing that I always ask all of our engineers and all of our um professionals, whether it be Eric or um any of them is, if you were a resident, which one would you pick? And I said, you know, and why? And then I said, okay, as an engineer, which one would you pick and why? And it was basically the same one. So we went through all of that towards the end and I said, you know, you, he's been around long enough to know, he's been around mo- more than, you know, he's been around longer than most of our residents. So I trust his opinion when it comes to this. I I value his opinion when it comes to this. And again, it's I'm just as much involved in this as anybody else. I try to, you know, I I think, and Mike has even said that, I I really do try not to give my opinion. Stacy really held most of the meeting and when it comes to this, I am not gonna step in any part of, I am going to sign any papers. You got it.
Doesn't mean, you know, get to weigh in, you're also a resident.
I am a resident, but I I, the rest of the neighbors, I will value their opinions to move this project forward.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any hesitations or reservations? Cause I think we're good.
I think everyone, awesome.
And then the last thing, in case anybody asks you about those sinkholes, so what happens to the old clay pipe? Any of those open areas where there are sinkholes, they're gonna backfill it with concrete or something so it doesn't keep eroding away. Is it gonna erode further? Probably not because we're not gonna make it a usable um flow of water there. So that's the, cause I was like, well, what are we doing with the old pipe? Like, is it gonna collapse? No, they're gonna backfill it with concrete. So that is in the estimate, that is something that they already kind of considered too. So it's not like a, yeah.
Does everybody have the information from Ben that was, does, has anybody had a chance to look at that? Does anybody have Ben's information? Does everybody have Ben's information? And does anybody have any idea what I'm even talking about?
I don't.
I should have went to everybody.
I looked at it. I don't know. I'm not, that is not my forte.
No, I'm not the first one, no I don't. Climate change, it's, it's not coming, it's here and.
I'm going to make sure that.
It's gonna get worse.
Any, I'm gonna make sure everybody has this.
Yeah, the building, the drain, more water, we more water faster is important. Cause more water's coming.
It would have been sent out, it's a forty-five page um document. So here we go. Yeah, I'm gonna send this to everybody right now.
Then what is this, you're sending us?
This is, um you guys remember passing the legislation for up to seventy-five hundred dollars for Ben to get us information to move forward with funding and financing options and different things like this. This is his.
Oh, that.
Yes, that Ben.
So we can make it even more cost effective by finding some sort of zero percent interest loan or something.
Zero percent interest or free money grant.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna, and I'm gonna say this on recording, I haven't gone through forty-five pages of this. I have no idea what this is. I just asked if anybody else had seen it yet.
I don't believe it came to me.
One, two, three, four, five, six. One, two, three, four, five. Yeah.
Yeah, it's not even in my other box, let alone my focus box.
Am I good at that? Can Jeffrey look at that? Is that something?
That's focused in others, it's an awesome feature.
Cause I'm not.
I think I did. Uh uh, either way, we're gonna, Eric, do you wanna see it too?
Yeah, yes.
And then, and.
That was a test to see if you're paid.
Yeah, I was just making sure you're really here.
Yeah, he's sitting in the back, I know.
There it is, yay, thank you.
Okay, so I know you guys don't wanna do that right now, but um so if anybody's really sleepy tonight, feel free. Um start reading, forty-five pages. All forty-five pages of it.
Sure, forty-five pages.
Okay, so I think we're all on board with that now. We just kind of tell Mike that we're all on board with the same thing and we figure out um who, you know, who's writing the check and who's putting it on their credit card, so.
Yeah, but I wanna move forward with this because the longer we wait, the more damage there is to properties and.
Well, the early to get started, while we can start getting bid, we just have, but we're looking for disruption in most ways.
Yeah, but like.
Well, we need to get started, so once the weather hits, we already have the people.
Yeah, we're ready to go.
Who ordered the stuff that's gonna take four months to get there anyway.
And financing options and all of that can take a while. And if we end up doing some sort of, and again, we have forty-five pages to go through to see what he recommends. So we may not even be able to put in um for financing until July of twenty twenty-three. So this may be end of twenty twenty-three. Um I know the residents will be excited to, there's a lot of, let me, let's also start with that. There's a lot of prep work that's gonna go into it. I mean, as far as easements go and all of that, getting all of these residents to sign, that's all stuff that we can get moving forward on, assuming that, you know, everybody's on board.
So when we're, we have the financing figured out, we can just.
But yeah, you still wanna have a plan and it's still like when we're ready to go, I wanna be ready to go instead of being like, wait a minute, we don't have like an easement for this person. Like, that's not, you know.
Yeah, that's not.
That's how we're doing here.
All right, so I think we're all good with that. Do you have anything for your committee? I mean.
Uh safety knot at the moment.
Beautiful. Mark has a meeting on.
Yeah, we don't have any legislation.
Next, in two weeks?
I have something legislative.
Um the only thing I will say, let's take a moment now that I think about it. Sorry, Brian, for wrenching again.
Oh, no, don't worry. I'm, we're all about to throw wrenches.
What are our thoughts on the, the little land bridge between the road and the road across the pri- the bridge and letting people's land back to their driveways?
Okay, I actually do, the, the walking path between, uh this is, you're leading into a text message I just got thirty seconds ago. Is that what you're talking about?
And it's more, actually more to the point, the request for, to vacate the right path back to.
I'll let Eric, um I actually, the night, the, the last time that we talked about it, I did email, um cause I do it during the meeting, so I don't forget. Um and I'll let Eric chime in, but my understanding is there was still some survey work that needed to be done, Jesse, and they had all discussed um having survey work done. Survey work has been extremely slow and really far behind and it's gonna take a little while to get that done. I don't, that was my question to you. Um because one of the residents.
My, my, I have to pester there, you know, and here's the problem, since we're not paying the survey, right? So technically Lisa paid for the survey. Uh he needs to make a couple of adjustments.
Okay, so that's.
Now, it's been a while because of everything going on that I reached out, I will pester him again and say, hey, this is a relatively minor thing. He has to include, he has to include our split and and he didn't, there's a calculation that we know, he did a, he did a prelim essentially, he needs to, he needs to finalize it. Um I will bug and see if I can get him to send something back to you, but other than that, it's still, still table item and technically you can take it up anytime you want.
Yeah, this might be a crazy question, but are we allowed to call and bug the uh?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I can bug.
Okay, so my wife said mortgage, my wife said mortgage lending and she has people like, why have you been the appraiser up here? And she's like, I'm a mortgage lender and I can't talk to your appraiser.
Correct.
No, no, it's not like that. It's uh.
Surveys different.
That just happened this week and why it was stuck in my head.
I can bug, I I can bug. If the guy's like, listen, I'm not doing any more work until I get a, hey, this stuff's happening. Until I get paid, I don't know what the arrangement is. You know, maybe it's a simple thing, maybe he's got an arrangement to do things and tip, you know, I I don't know what this. So I'll bug until I'm told to jump in the lake.
So to essentially, we're kind of in limbo until we get that in.
Correct, I I would wait for that and then you, you know, you've got plenty of things on your plate. We'll, we'll get that in, I believe, hopefully in a couple of months, so.
And and just a reminder, if we could keep the other family, Susan and Robert, I know that they felt like they weren't left in communication. Just to keep that in mind, let's make sure that they stay in communication regardless of what we do.
Right, and I have a third.
Just making a point to show them that.
I have a third resident that is now asking to be included in the information as well. So it's one of those things that they want to know the next time we discuss it in an actual public meeting that they would like to be there. So um so I have a third resident that is interested in the information. I I don't know pro con, I I have no idea, not my business, not, not why.
Yeah, just a catch-up, whatever.
Yeah, so um it obviously affects the area. They live in the area, so they would like the information as well. Um and actually, I just let her know that uh we were gonna talk, we would probably be talking about it tonight. Um so I'm gonna let her know that it's not slated to be on the agenda anytime in the near future. It's gonna be a couple of weeks or a couple of months.
That was the only thing I had, well, that and the uh dog thing, the leash.
Yeah, we agreed on.
Direct control, we agreed on as long as it's direct control, I mean.
Yeah.
Can someone show me where that is according to?
It was, I got, it was the email that you handed.
Where did you get it from?
You sent the email out.
So the one I sent?
Yeah, yeah. It was from the email that you got from.
Alicia?
The, the people with the Italian Greyhound uh runs the col- runs Worthington Farmer's Market. Uh son of a motherless, what was her name?
I'll get it, I'll get it.
Skinny, she got dark hair.
The original email that I sent out.
You handed a piece of paper, so I don't have anything I can go, you handed paper to people and said.
Did you have it? Sorry, guys, the last two.
Hawk, Christine Hawks, Christine, Christine.
Okay, now I know who you're talking, I know, I'm sorry.
Do we have?
My apologies.
Cause she also doesn't remember it.
If I. My apologies. You're right.
Took a long time.
If I could scan, if I could have that and scan that in and send to Jesse, cause we want Jesse to put it together, the legislation. So if I could have that to scan in and say, this is the leg- this is the verbiage we want used and then bring it back to you guys so you guys can see it.
Yes, please.
That would be nice.
Um so.
I'll send it to you right now.
Yeah, so if somebody can get me that, I will, Jesse is obviously not here tonight for a reason.
I think it would be the first reading.
Exactly. So if I can get that from him Thursday, if not, it'll be on the following one. But he is um on a work trip. He's not, he's not on vacation, but he's not, he's not in town.
Gotcha, he can't be here for whatever.
He can't be here and he's not wanting to be at the office tomorrow.
I believe he's okay. All right, um.
Wait, I have this. Wait, I have another thing. I just thought of it.
Go right ahead.
Everybody wants to talk about, at least all my neighbors wanna talk about um a walking path. So that's, I'm gonna put that bug in everybody's ear.
We have been talking about that till we're purple.
I know.
I'm tired of talking about it, I just wanna.
We have a verbal planning session on that. I think that's appropriate to discuss. We discussed that in P and Z. We have, we, well, in the past, so we, we have talked about that. We have already gained during this whole process, public access easement.
Oh, really? I missed it. You was having a busy, you were busy.
And we are, you know, we can move forward next sections, but I think there's a larger conversation that we have to have with council, potentially uh in executive session concerning real estate.
Okay, I got you.
And those type of conversations because they involve other people's properties, uh potentially unfriendly folks. So we, we have to talk about how we get to our lake.
Yeah.
And we just have to have that conversation later. So.
How much later and?
Well, I, I would say, I would say with, you know, sometime in, you know, maybe, maybe by December to January timeframe, we, we should have some type of discussion, right? And to start that process.
Cause it's safe to say at this point, we don't have or do we have access and fair use of land that goes from there to there?
We, I'd have to show you on a map. Um I, if you bring up the auditor's map, I could easily just talk about it.
Pull it up while we do.
Or Google either way, but the auditor shows the property lines.
Um if you guys don't mind, while you're doing that, I'm gonna switch gears for thirty seconds. Um just so we can keep this moving. Um MPCA had reached out to me. Um and due to circumstances beyond their control, horse drawn carriage rides are not available to us this season. But we have found a great alternative, trolley rides. We are able to rent two trolleys for two hours from six to eight PM to take us around the village to see the lights on December eleventh. The cost to rent is eleven hundred dollars plus tax. Um for the past several years, the village has covered the cost of the carriage rides. It's not completely accurate, but I will go over that. MPCA would like to ask again for it this year. If it is possible for the village to cover the cost of the trolley rides this holiday season, please let me know if there is an official request that needs to be made and what the correct process is. So I have now been reached out to um asking for eleven hundred dollars for the village for MPCA to have two trolleys. Um I don't have a lot of detail, I'm not gonna. Oh, they're still going.
And they don't, they don't ask for, for anything. And I mean, this is their biggest event.
And I'm gonna give you the reason people got mad at me last year for doing it, just so you know. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it. Okay, so here's the pros and cons to it. We did do it last year. Um they asked us for three thousand dollars last year. It was two thousand something. It wasn't all the way to three thousand dollars. Um I, they asked me early, early, early on. I believe they asked me in twenty twenty-one, didn't happen. No, twenty twenty didn't happen because of COVID. They did do it in twenty twenty-one. Um I took some slack, I definitely took some brutal um screaming from one particular resident that said I didn't have authorization to do it. Um however, I did.
The reason to do what? I mean, I.
The trolley, okay, so MPCA is asking for eleven hundred dollars for trolley rides. Um I did the three thousand dollars last year. I had already promised them that. I have not promised anything this year, not because nobody had asked me.
They had no idea that they needed it until just recently.
Yeah. Yes, so my point to you is, we just had recently talked about an appropriation and we would need to do, more than likely would need to do an appropriation for this. I have talked to um finance about that. So is there anybody on, not on board with us helping? The reason that some people do not, and I'm, I'm just saying this because I want to be as transparent as possible. They, this is for MPCA members only. Um this isn't for every resident and that's why some people were mad at me last year for doing it because this was not for all, open to all residents.
This is what I will say to that, cause it sounds like it said the trolleys are gonna cost them eleven hundred dollars and they wanna give, they want us to give them eleven hundred dollars, which means they want us to pay one hundred percent.
Correct, which is what they did last year.
If we pay one hundred percent, they cannot limit who shows up.
I, yeah.
Anyone in the village can show up. If it is one hundred percent, if we give out a grant and they put some of their money in, then I can say, well, we're doing a grant, we're not funding it all the way.
That's fair.
Their thing, but if we, if they wanna give, if we give more than fifty percent, it's a village activity, not an MPCA activity.
That's a great, uh, that's why we have these conversations, so thank you.
I was hesitant last year as well, but it was already in motion.
Yes. So, um and again, I did it on, I I don't wanna say I did it on my own. We'd actually talked about it in finance meetings the last time in advance.
I was a little more giving money for the horse ride last year. People, we didn't give all of it, I don't think we gave more.
No, we did. We actually did fund it. They asked us for it because of Co- but the circumstances were a little different. It was COVID. They didn't have the money from the drive before. They weren't really able to go door to door.
I'll also say they didn't know they were gonna need this money. You knew you were gonna do this or not. You know, you should know what's in your bank account.
Well.
You knew if you were gonna have to ask for it or not.
In fairness, this is eleven hundred and normally it's close to three thousand. So what were they, what were they planning on doing if it was three thousand?
That's not in fairness, that's, your lie is even worse. You're like, we didn't know we were gonna have to do this. Yeah, you thought you were gonna spend three times as much, so it kinda makes me wonder why you're surprised you don't have the ten dollars.
I'm not willing.
You thought you were gonna spend thirty.
I'm not interested in taking the full brunt this year because it wasn't asked in advance. You know, the other part is, is we have, I have also, we have all seen the um, the people getting upset because we're doing waving readings and passing things as an emergency and we don't have a choice with this. So if we do an appropriation, we will need to waive the readings.
Um so I don't want the village and people to necessarily be penalized because of perhaps.
Correct. Um we had also, this is not.
Anything else in that, cause we were in recordings.
I know. No, well, and I think the other part to that is, we, I will be in discussion with them because obviously we're not gonna be doing pickups at the community buildings. So the discussion is gonna be maybe at the pool, maybe seeing, and I'm not, I'm not MPCA and I'm not telling them what to do, but maybe they should reach out to the school. Um seeing if they could use some of the area down there and pick up down here, cause we were thinking.
They definitely should because that pool is terrible with that gravel. It's like a big bus thingy and the people staring.
Exactly. But we would be inside here. If, if they let us use that back area, there's a possibility of being able to, they were using, people were going in and out of that side door. I mean, it's worth a asking. I mean, I know they already have the date, so I, I think it's always worth asking. I think it's been great.
I'm just, I'm just super hesitant to go funding a private event for public money. I do, I did not like that last year, but.
I just, that's the only reason.
I just need a phone call. I don't see them having an issue with that, but it's a very good point and I think it needs to be.
And, okay, so here's where we are. We will find out from MPCA. We will offer them the two options. You either pay for half and it can be, you know, as a grant. And so, and then we will do an appropriation if we need to. So thank you. That's a great point.
Yeah, that's an awesome point.
Tell us, tell us what you're thinking.
I've seen this a thousand times over here.
What we did is, um when we had the opportunity, we obtained easement from uh Park Lane Drive to the end of the property line, plenty of room to, you know, when we had to uh increase the infrastructure here, we also made sure we got in the books and reported a, a public access easement. Now that our fourth end of the line, this uh owner's line here. Now, there's plenty of space to work with between here, here and here. Once we get to our shoreline here, we can easily create a path around the, around the shore. At this point, we will need to, essentially at this point here, we will need to cross roughly to here. So we'll have to have a bridge engineered. It's a, you know, something, it's not terribly expensive. It's just one of those things you've gotta do here.
It's not that deep, you could just.
Well, you could go close bridge. And this can, this can be done.
But it will be deeper someday though.
This can be done in concert with, with what we're doing with um.
Stretching.
Thank you. Lake work down the road. So this is, this could all work together as far as how with the pylons and things like that. Not that big of a deal. Once we get to here, we own all this property on here and this is our pathway. This lines up nicely with a cross point right there on our pathway and then attaches to the rest of the pathway system as it currently exists.
So we can't just do this and be done?
No, because it, that's, that's not, that's not really fair to the, to these residents.
That, okay, I can see that.
We're putting a six to eight foot path between people's ground. The best, this is the widest point right here. And this, this is, I mean, and I'll just make this statement from a planning standpoint, this side of these yards is an unusable point for, I mean, culture. It's, it's, it's got a topo, it's got a water, you know, it's something that we would, we would simply utilize to get to the shoreline here. We need to talk to a couple of these other folks. Uh we can probably bring in some easement. We may have it uncooperative, but there's ways to handle that. We can discuss that at a later point. You know, but, but it's, it, it's a doable thing, but it's a, you know, we've, we've discussed how we would do this in P and Z, discussed a little with, you know, conceptual engineering. So it's not, it's not crazy outline. It's probably the best, we think the best pathway to get the rest of the passes from, from this area. So we can connect everybody that way.
I think it's a great to have that little bridge, have a little path in the bridge. I haven't been years, but I used to walk down on that Long Tangi bike trail that goes down to East End. And there's a couple nights, we lived a lot of fancy nice bridges on Columbus's walking trails.
Yeah, exactly. That would, that would be a very nice, I think it's very subtly pleasing. It would be a nice way to utilize the northern lake as well too.
Yeah, once it's dredged out too, got some wildlife restoration, dammit had restoration, it'll be nice.
All right, cool.
So it's on, it's, it's on the, on the uh.
The rocks.
Yes, on the rock side. We can, we can try, start to mold it with some other rock.
Next.
Next, uh next, you gonna bring up my concrete thing? I'll hand around. So this is a discussion of how we would like to move forward with amphitheater work and what I would like to get from the council. Um and I, I'll, I'll send this little document around to everybody. This is just example work. I only have a few. I had to print this off on my own printer, so sorry, I didn't get enough. I always forget that there's not a copy at this location.
Okay.
There it is, I had a pretty high idea. Yes, I had my idea. So this is, this won't line up exactly with this, but I printed it off at my house first before things to go for Brian, who's in Atlanta, this here, which is nice.
Essentially, if we're surprised, we'll scroll on the computer.
That would match, it's the current.
Essentially, just give you an idea what you can do with concrete. I realize we talk about decking. Now, the thing is decking, truck decking and the concrete are probably equivalent for price stand. It is our recommendation, talking with contractors and especially the guy that fixed our wall up, we really wanna shoot water away from the wall at this point. Putting, putting decking is not allowing that to happen. If we put in a concrete with a slight slope to the rear, if we, if we sheet all water back and get it away from, you know, you can make it look just like this with the stamp. I mean, it's wonderful.
How much of a slope are you talking about?
Oh, just minor. You don't need much. We would, we would just, you know, we would, you would, you wouldn't have it, you wouldn't want it totally flat. You don't want it aiming towards the wall. You don't want it aiming towards the back of. Oh, just minor, you don't need much, we would, we would just, you know, we would, you wouldn't have it, you wouldn't want it totally flat, you don't want it aiming towards the wall, you don't want it aiming towards the back of it.
Just a slight breeze.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Like, water will go in or out of the way.
Normal, normal stage draking is the other direction, so that.
Understood. We would, we would, we would plan that out as we needed to at the end, but essentially the concrete.
Uh, the audience is up there and I'm looking up here.
Concrete, the concrete.
We have this about it.
Yeah, we wanna protect the wall, we'll, we'll do what's the best practice and, and merge into the stage usage. But we definitely, the concrete behind the wall will overreact, quite frankly. That was the other thing we discussed with our, with our mason. So, so really, what I, what I need is just two, two things, concrete good, and then I get a couple more quotes.
Concrete's good, but this new thing that makes it look like phony wood plank.
Does it, yeah, this is the other question. Brian says he likes the plank, what do other people like? Do you have any choices?
I like whichever one is smoothest.
Okay.
Cause you're gonna look at, like, this top one looks pretty, and I don't know how actual bumpy it is, but if you're trying to set something up on it, and it's bumpy, then you're going, oh shoot, the one leg went a hole.
Sure.
Yeah, and, you know.
Well, the, the, the phony, the phony wood at least would look like the planking of a stage, right? Stages are typically wood plank.
I like the stone though, cause it matches the, uh.
Maybe a bit longer later, I just wanted to see which one people like.
It can be a warm, phony wood.
I like this one personally.
Yeah.
I, no, that's the worst one.
What?
I like that, I like that one.
It's like L V, it's so trendy, and L V P, no, it's not gonna, it's not gonna use more.
It's fine, yeah, it, it's a little over texture, but very good, whatever you guys like. I don't, at the end of the day, I'm just kidding, so.
Is there a huge price difference between any one of those, or do you think?
Not necessarily, we, we need to get some quotes.
Okay.
I, I, I bring this up because, this, this, I put here, not because of this design, I want people to think of our M L on a tree we could put in the middle, something like that would be great.
Love it.
Now you're talking.
Yeah, so, so that would be, I think, indeed Brian's business, but I just, I point this out, this could be done in some form, and I, I just, as we think through this, I will get some quotes just to see what.
Options are, and you guys can.
You're gonna hate me.
That's what hangers.
I'm, I'm just afraid if we put some kind of symbol, some artistic thing, that some conspiracy theorist is gonna smash it with a sledgehammer with some.
Wait a minute, okay, so.
Then look at the middle of the stage as a distraction from whoever, anybody wants to.
You don't wanna make on the stage for your options.
You gotta give people a little bit credit that.
This one here?
Yeah, I like that stuff, yeah.
I'd be like, I'd be afraid to put a nice symbol in, some conspiracy theorist is just gonna smash it, saying it's some new world, or you're gonna stop her.
The world is.
Exactly, I'm afraid, cause people do that in a crowd.
Yeah, not, not a legal.
No, cause it's just like.
I would do this one.
You don't have to worry about your stupid symbol rocking back and forth.
This one seems a little too, uh.
I like that one too, that's my one trick.
Okay, that's a little texture.
Yikes. I feel like we did our spending in two days, you know, or the bear of.
We had like two days, two days. It's like, I go on my weekends.
Can we get a tie dye at a minute?
I mean, I, I'm going to tell next week, just completely.
You deserve it, and it'll be great, it's.
Tie dye texture.
Just to get away, like, we only go for two, three days.
Thought you were gonna go for that one.
The worst part is if I work from my phone, I'm gone. And it's like, and it's like, it was all while I was gone, responding.
Yeah.
Was, um. I mean, you didn't read the worst one, you didn't even see the worst email.
Well, if someone does not pay attention, because there's a star on the ground.
Your show's on, that's your fault.
Then the theater person might not just be that good.
We should give people something to look at, you know, something to be interested in.
This was the start of it, this is, this is how he, this is the first email I got. Oh, yeah, that is a good point.
Cause if there's too many trees and they're.
Well.
Yes, we, we, we can make things match, that's not a problem. We'll match it up and we'll show everybody.
But even if this, like, if that's too small, but, like, it's gonna be horrible.
And you expect me to be nice to you, like, seriously?
I'm, I'm not changing.
And then it starts to start up again, but.
Colors are changing.
But where's the, where's the root swan?
No, that was, I mean, just, I'm sure you're gonna send me some pretty little words or something, I mean, really.
Next.
Yep, okay, next, uh, thank you, uh, so moving on.
Explain this to me.
So, I'll be back, close up, uh, trees, wanna talk trees real quick, the whole, couple items, we, we've done a survey of tree trees in the new section that we need to.
I love talking about trees.
Well, listen, cause this is, no question.
We need to replace, um, everything's post warranty at this point, so, uh, let's answer that question. Uh, essentially, things have been damaged, you know, trees have died, you know, over time, things that, that happens. Now, we have a, um, a specific requirement for, um, a bunch of native trees, we have a separate species that came to us years ago that we had put in there. Uh, I have that map originally, and John Canty was kind enough to go out and give me location to where all the trees that are currently missing are.
Do you know how many there was?
Read what's that?
Do you know how many there was?
I'm thinking ten-ish, but I, I, I don't have in front of me.
Just, no, that's fine.
Do it all sugar maple and all of it?
No, 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 we cannot. Uh, that's not allowed by, by your own, your own approvals. Damn it, so, so real quick.
It should all be sugar maples.
You're welcome.
Real quick, so, I just wanna make sure one's clear, in, in my mind, especially doing this a long time, street trees are the property of the municipality. And we require by development code that there are two trees for every residence in this development, there may be one or two exceptions, I don't, exactly, we're not exact, but every, every residence has, does have two street trees. Now, tree trees, you know, codes we adopted that's fairly common, says that, you know, the resident is responsible for pruning the tree much like cutting the grass. Now, I will simply tell you, generally speaking, practice standpoint, it's a bad move. You don't want to have your residents go out there, you don't know what they're doing, chopping the tree to death. Most municipalities go out there with their own folks or their own contractor, and they prune it professionally, especially as the trees get big. These trees are not picking up yet for any major pruning, don't worry about that yet, if they get suckers, we can have, we'll vary it around pole sucker, it's not that big a deal. When they get big enough, we'll have this discussion a few years down the road when I'm still here, and say, look, it's time to have maintenance team, maybe you got maintenance guys in. The first and foremost thing is that we've got ten or so trees that need to be replaced, and we're gonna just put that in budget for twenty twenty-three. I would like to know if there are any other trees, because we can, obviously, if you get a better deal or discount, people know about the trees. Any, any thoughts, we got some time, but we, you know, if we have to put in the budget.
Are you asking for more trees that we might do?
If people think they want more trees, if they get anywhere in the village, if there's some lawns, we can go ahead and get that done.
Will this, this also include all of the ones for the east shore court project, because we are going to need those replaced as well?
You need trees for those too, so we.
Yes, and that is on our dime at this point.
Yeah, so we got east court, east shore court trees, we've got ten or twelve trees over here, in the new section, maybe one or less right in the.
Residents were responsible for the service, going back to it.
And if there's anywhere else people think they need trees, that's when they're dead.
We, we are not replacing all of them, we said we would do a couple.
I think that one's replaced this year for her.
Yeah, that one.
Per plan, so define those street trees in front of every town.
Oh, street trees.
Those are our responsibilities?
I, I believe we're just talking about the new section.
Are you saying that?
Yeah, but even then, I'm not into that, I think I already see.
That's what they're talking about.
Any street tree in their line?
Street, street trees?
Only the ones on our property.
See, this is. The, 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 the mayor wanted me to clarify, and so, from a practical standpoint, a street tree is a piece of your property. Can you understand? Anything within the right of way that is between the sidewalk and the street is your property, at the end of the day. So you own that tree, that's why we can tell people, you have to put a specific tree in there for the plan, and even though we might be able to make the tree up, I'm not a recommendation. Uh, but we can tell them to do that as well, but it's still our tree at the end of the day. And since we don't have.
No, you're confusing me.
No, no, you just sent us their tree.
Cause you said over there.
No, no, no.
You said the church, right?
No, it's, it's, it's our tree, and we can make them prune, not our tree, they're, they're, yeah, basically, it's the same thing with grass in, within that area, we tell them to cut the grass. But we have rights to do whatever we want in that area. Anything, even though we have a sidewalk program, and we can, we can tell people, even we replaced all, we, we can have a program to clean them, which is our right to do, that sidewalk still belongs to us.
So, that, I.
So do the aprons.
So my only other question is, how does this, how does this affect the old section as well? If we start replacing people's street trees, because I have one that is technically.
You don't, you don't have to replace any street trees.
No, if they're dead.
You, you don't not have to replace them in the old section, you don't have development taxes.
But I just feel like that you're gonna start getting, no, I get it, I'm just, again, this is just a roundabout conversation.
There's also no tree laws in the old section.
Yeah, we don't have sidewalks.
We have to think through a right of way.
That's still the right of way. If you have a tree in your, in your right of way.
Between a tree lawn and a regular.
And I would also say the trees are so different, the old se, I mean.
Oh, I don't disagree, but I'm just saying residents that are over there that are getting.
A seventy-year-old tree, you're starting a new tree.
I'm just.
So what if a hundred fifty-year-old tree dies in the tree lawn, who's responsible for that?
You're just replacing it, and it catches up.
Now, now, again, in, in time, even when those trees become six to ten caliber inch in size.
You can feel free to take that burnt tree down, it's a pain in my ass.
The difference between this section and the old section is that you have a development text which is council approved with M I, it says, thou must have two street trees in that lawn per house, okay? So we re, we require ourselves to maintain that and have that, that's the difference.
Whereas most in the old neighborhood don't even have, I shouldn't say that, a lot don't have, uh, the street trees.
Most.
Yeah.
Cause the trees just aren't up near the front of the property, they're in the middle or the back.
Okay, I have a question.
Go ahead, yes, ma'am.
I am going to be the most unpopular person in the new section, but I propose we gift all those trees back to the residents.
We can't give them.
Why not?
Because there are trees in our right of way, can't give them.
Why can't we give them back?
But you've got a whole mountain, you put them in the property then.
They are in their property.
No, it's our, it's our right of way, it's our, it's our street.
Okay, so without, okay, so then I'm confused, so, okay, so the scenario.
The dirt is that, it's just within the right of way.
Okay, but.
Which is ours.
But, okay, so.
Technically.
I, hold on. Can, can I talk? Hey, I'll, I'm talking, okay? Sorry.
Yes.
Back, the surgeon's back, okay. This is my room right now, okay. So theoretically, just to clarify, I'm gonna use Jason as an example, he has a tree in his lawn in front of the sidewalk. Is that his tree or is that our tree?
I should.
Where are we going to?
We're going to Jason's house.
Now, if you want to show, if you, if you can turn on the air, real quick, here, come on, twenty twenty-one arrows now. Right here, click this here.
This one way, hard egg.
Okay, on twenty twenty-one arrows.
Well, that's nice. That's very useful for stopping.
So, so. You gotta come out a little bit from the kitchen.
Let's do the street for. Look at his living room.
Oh, good, 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 that's good, okay. Now, what you see here is their property lines in, where the sidewalk is the sidewalk, everything here is our property, it is ours, okay? It's not their dirt.
They were double sided and night-holed, okay, that makes sense, so, cause they help with.
So, so you can't gift that back to anyone, that's, that's our, that's ours.
Why can't we give it back?
Cause it's not, it's not their right.
Flat it, to up.
Okay, I mean, we're, we're not listening to Stacy's question or I answer. Isn't feasible that we couldn't give it back?
No.
We're not going.
No, you can't give back, cause the right of way, that's part of the street, that's where utilities go.
Oh, okay, then they're liable, okay, okay, you can, yeah, that's. I was thinking for, I was there, we're doing.
This is, this is illegal, lack at this point, so the change requires the laws.
They can use the pool, but I don't know if the towns are gonna do it at the pool.
So what does the code say as it stands currently?
This code says, each, each house has to have two street trees in the street.
And how many tents are removed and all that kind of stuff to do it, cause they don't have it.
Who is responsible for those street trees?
Our trees.
Can we make them not our trees?
No, as long as you yank them out and stick them in their yard now.
I mean.
What's, so, can I ask a question, what, what is the problem?
My problem is, is like, my parents live in, in Gulf Village in Powell, and those are, like, same scenario, those are their trees.
Mine was in New Albany when I lived there.
Are you willing to bet you money that they just are misinformed, and if I pulled, I worked in Powell for a long time, and I, I can show you.
On Gulf Village?
Gulf Village, Gulf Village was a subdivision brought down by Kenny, right? Don, it was a Don Kenny development, but that was done by my boss at the time, David Betts, and so I came in right at the beginning of that construction. And so, that area up there has right of way like this, there are pathways, there are sidewalks in a lot of those divisions, because, and so anything that's, that's sidewalk and supply is the same way. Anything that's sidewalk to the street is the city of Powell's in that case.
But technically, we've passed the charges on the, we've passed the charges of, and I'm, I'm being devil's advocate here, because I don't, I don't have a house over there, so I'm, I'm just saying this. Sidewalks, we have now made the homeowners responsible for, for, so how are those?
You're allowed to, you're allowed to do certain things under the law, okay? And, and, and it's just like, and, and so I'm not telling you, you can't make them prune the trees, I'm just telling you, you shouldn't, okay?
Right.
Because it means that not a tree definitely put in.
Do you have, like, I, I, I told you, I just talked to that guy, and he tells me that his contracts are tens of mil, you know, he's got some contracts that are much larger, they're not the Village of Inverva Park, tens of millions of dollars to do this every year. So if we're ta, I mean, are we, are we talking pruning these trees and doing all of this for our village?
You're really having this year.
No, but I'm saying, I, I'm just, again, we have a lot of upcoming expenses, we have police department that, you know, we have had turnover, like, there's no tomorrow and.
These are very minor expense there every year.
Minor expense as to what, ten thousand, twenty thousand, fifty thousand, because.
You're not have, for example, going back to Powell, you don't have the subdivision size that you have.
Right, ours is small.
In which, in which they do budget ten to twenty grand, you don't have the subdivision size overall, which is for street trees, it's a whole, it's a whole different ballgame.
Cause I've gone through almost fifteen thousand dollars in tree trimming this year, and I have done nothing.
Yeah. That, that, that's a lot of trees.
That is a lot of trees, but I'm telling you, two thousand dollars a pop doesn't last far.
Hold on, let's, let's, let's.
End of the program.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm throwing it out there, cause I don't know if you guys know that.
Okay, so let's look at what's right in front of us, and then think about what we want it to be.
Correct.
Right, what are our real options?
And that's why we're having this.
What's right in front of us is that there's, you know, as it stands right now, approximately twelve trees that as our current understanding is, we are responsible to replace. And, and we can't really change that in the blink of an eye. We, we could change our, change our, our code and require fewer trees, one tree per property, right? That would cut the obligation in half.
But which one?
It's, but it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Right, whichever one dies first gets to die, and then you've got the other one, and then you replace one.
The tree dies, yeah.[1516.81]
We tag it, we put an M P if we bought it or something?
Yeah, right, right. Uh, but that, you know, and then, and, or we could make it that there are no trees required, I don't think that's, I don't think that's really super optimal. I think people like street trees in general, and so, but those, those are really our only options.
There's a third option I can give you.
And what's your third option?
Third option is, if you, if the, if you want, if you're very concerned about that five or ten grand a year, which in all honesty is a very minor portion of the budget to have very nice trees.
Until it isn't, until they wreck the sidewalk.
You can, you can foist it, you can foist it upon the, uh, homeowners in a way that says, yes, we can, some of your sidewalks, we could go around and say, alright, we're gonna, we're gonna require you to have the tree, and congratulations, we're gonna pay for your replacements and be professionally installed. So, hundred bucks is what it is, and we just, you pay for the check, we need the profit, so, ten thousand. So you think you can do a sidewalk program?
Yeah, I can do that, I also don't have a problem with that.
And who's maintaining the sidewalks there too, that's in our.
The people who own the house.
Yeah, we are, we've already done that.
But, but the sidewalk is outside of the.
Yes, that is something that cities are allowed to do, and every city does, because they say, yes, we own the sidewalk. No, we're not going to get in the business of replacing all these little sidewalks everywhere. Now, I'm not, we're not that big, it's not like we're Columbus trying to keep an eye on a twenty thousand miles of sidewalk, or however much sidewalk there is in Columbus. We're looking at a smaller thing, but we're still saying, no, that's your sidewalk, that's your responsibility. Do I own it? No, you don't, that's beside the point.
And here's, here's a little, here's a little thing that I'm gonna say, just because I like to butt into conversations. We have got to get over to the new section, there are plenty of sidewalks that are in need of us to enforce, and we don't have a team to enforce that. So I'm, I go back to, we have one code enforcement officer that works part-time, and we have one maintenance person that's part-time. Um, I walk the new section, I know that there's, there are actual tripping hazards already over there to, right now. Um, so, we have got to figure out, I, I, I don't know what I'm gonna do at this point, but there's. Yeah, so we're gonna have to start getting that ball rolling, and we do have trees right now that are in need of trimming. Um, they are, I, I, um, I am the biggest offender of this, I walk with my phone and run right into them, so it is my own fault, but it is a problem. Um, because somebody actually brought it to my attention that even people with wheelchairs, um, are not able to go underneath the trees, and it's on, I believe, black sycamores where it's the worst.
That's, that's our letter.
Yeah, so there is, there's a couple, and they're actually, they're right close to each other.
Need to identify them and write the letters. So, on to them, first, do we have something that says specifically that the homeowners have to trim the trees?
Yes, we do.
So maybe we need to just.
We, you can do this, individual letters, you go out to individual homeowners where we have an egregious issue, you know, where we got something coming right across the sidewalk and they're not cutting it. And then, if they don't do it, we can do it and fee them back, right?
Well, my recommendation is, let's start with, they put it in the newsletter, just to kind of hone people, and then, if we have to send letters out, we can.
I mean, yeah, we don't have to have this all happen instantly overnight.
Oh, so it's just change, so we can go.
Yeah.
Well, sure.
Right.
The second thing I have is, I'm afraid that, if you're saying the village is gonna replace all of the dead trees, I'm afraid that when you start looking at the trees that people have already pulled out because they're dead, that we're now getting into closer to thirty trees.
Yeah, I would agree with you.
No, 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 we, we, we accept it, we, we know what it is.
Cause I've seen some that are missing also.
I, there's several in my street lawn, so.
Yeah, there's supposed to be two per house, John does that, we found the ones that were missing, we have it on, we'll, we'll double check it, but I.
I believe it is, that number is way off, because the village itself had close to ten.
Yeah.
Yeah, over between the basketball court, just the village property, of, by the basketball court, things that were done.
We, we, you might overpower it around, around the public.
And that might be, that could be, and maybe we don't.
The, the, the trees are pretty.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we want trees, yeah.
I'm saying there's, I have five freaking street trees, so.
Yeah.
Now you're just bragging, yeah.
Why do you get so mad at the corner?
I have eleven trees on my property.
Yeah.
Well, just enough.
I have a dead hundred fifty year old oak tree.
I have two alive trees and one still dead, and the rest of them died in the back. So, this was, do you guys wanna continue to talk about it, do you guys wanna bring this to legislation, do you guys want to?
Well, I, I feel like this is a whole meeting unto itself, because this is, this is a policy discussion, this is a legislative discussion, this is a, a yada, yada, yada.
I feel like we've gone back and forth for so long, and here's the reason that we're bringing it to your attention. We are getting residents that are getting irritated, because they are being played back and forth. Um, we don't have an answer for them, and that's the only reason, so if this is, uh, this, I agree with you, it's a.
So here, here's what I think in the short term, residents that are upset, we should identify the addresses that have the street trees that need trimmed, and.
No, these are replaced.
Oh, need, oh, street trees that need replaced, we should identify them, and include it in the same order that we were just talking about, and replace the ones that need.
Yeah, the, the ten that we know we have to do.
Do we know what he's charging this per tree right now?
I, I don't.
Do we don't, I don't know either, I, I, yeah, I don't know.
Any trimming that, that needs done should be identified and let her send.
Okay.
And then, we can have a conversation about if and how we wanna change the rules going forward.
Okay.
Cause if there's only three or five trees that need trim.
There's not a lot, yeah.
Then, then I, I, you know, I want Chipper to just, and maybe not, maybe someone better than Chipper, I don't know, cause I don't know how good he is with trees or knowledgeable.
I think we need to actually, and I, I'm just gonna say this, I think it needs to be hired for somebody that knows exactly what they're doing and how to trim them, and.
Hopefully, professionals exist for a reason.
Correct, yeah.
Brian's wife who listens to.
We would have the same person.
I'm, I'm not, I know it's hard, I'm, I'm not saying your husband isn't good at a lot of things, I don't know how much of a arborist he is.
No, I, I don't think it's even about that, I think at some point, it runs, he runs out of time. I mean, it's, it's gonna be another thing that, it's just, it's not possible for, um, we're still in the middle of moving and doing all that, so.
Yeah.
We will move forward with that, we will talk to Brad, see if we could get those on the list. Um, you know, I'm gonna just be the bearer of bad news, I think that that's a difficult thing, because then we're gonna hear the, but you did this. Uh, I understand policies change and things change, and that's gonna be the answer. Um, or not, maybe we do continue, I, again, I don't live over there, I don't care which way we go.
We just, we'll talk to a discussion on another day, do we want, when, how soon?
Other than to say, let's replace the dead trees.
Other than to say, let's replace the trees that are dead, now how soon do we wanna have that?
I think it needs to be done before the, well, I, I guess.
Trees should be planted in the springtime there, and so we would put them, I would recommend put it on the budget.
Late, fall, springtime.
Yeah.
And then it's fall.
Plenty of time to discuss it.
I think it's, it's probably too late to get them for planting this fall.
Yeah, you don't wanna do it now, I mean, you could, but.
Yeah, no, well, we, we, we want trees.
We're on a budget for it.
Yeah, exactly, so, there we go, so we will revisit this.
The ones are getting replaced, I'm understanding, in the next thirty days, those ones, okay, yes.
Well, that's the one that M I's replaced, if there are other ones that M I is not.
They're not replacing them, we are, we're replacing them, these are on village property.
We're just for all our.
Whatever those trees are.
Those are getting done, yes, those are getting done.
Beautiful, that's what I love to hear, shit getting done.
Yes, and then January, December, January, we will figure out what we do for the spring. Works for me.
Beautiful.
I have one more tree thing that I'm gonna discuss for thirty seconds, it is, no, well, this is actually not a tree. I am going to be extremely short with this, um, and this is really just an F Y I for everybody sitting here. Um, this last couple days, uh, we had a resident call the police, because, um, this particular resident believed that, um, a neighbor was, I would rather just.
Hold on, before you go down that whole path, can I say something before I forget?
Yes.
I found a guy that would do street lettering, like, would, for thirty dollars a pop.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, God.
He'll come and draw whatever your street numbers, yeah, so if anybody's interested.
Like the ones that, that we had previously, oh, I want it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we could, I think he would get a lot for that.
I think he would get a lot.
Yeah, so I.
We can share it in an unofficial manner on our.